Morning, sir.
Kami, are you ready? Becky, are you ready? Good morning, everyone. It is 9:00 AM, Monday, March 10th, 2025. I will call the meeting of the Lincoln County Board of Commissioners to order. Couple of announcements. The Lincoln County Board of Commissioners reserves the right to enter closed session at any time as necessary to discuss agenda item currently before the board. We also reserve the right to take agenda items out of order for the convenience of the parties involved. We will be following the Open Meetings Act, which is posted at the entrance to this room. At 9:15, we will recess as the Board of Commissioners and convene as the Lincoln County Board of Equalization, also following the Open Meetings Act. Our first order of business is to open with prayer. Commissioner Woodruff, if you would, please.
Yes, please join me. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for this beautiful day. We thank you for the many blessings that we enjoy. Look after those less fortunate than ourselves, such that they may seek your guidance and your comfort. Look after the many men and women in law enforcement, in the military, the first responders, and the everyday heroes that protect us and guide us along through the troubles of our times. Look after this group as we meet today, such that we may take all items into consideration and make decisions pleasing in your eye. All these things we ask in Jesus's name, amen.
Amen. We will now approve the minutes regarding the Lincoln County Board of Commissioner meeting that was held on March 3rd, 2025.
What she's now that she said we're going to all approve them, I'm not going to make a motion. Make a motion that we approve the minutes of the meeting held March 3rd, 2025.
Second.
Since Joe decided to play along and make a motion.
I'm a team player.
Does anybody have any questions or corrections? Roll call, please. Hugley.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Aye.
Item three. Claims and treasures receipts.
Chair, I would make the motion that we approve those claims and treasures receipts as presented, with the caveat that if we find something that we need to research a little further, we will hold that one back.
That's a second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please. Woodruff.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Hugley.
Aye.
Woller.
Aye.
Next, we will receive an order filed, the fee reports submitted by the county sheriff and the county clerk.
Chair, I'd make a motion that we approve the fee reports submitted by the county sheriff and the county clerk as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
State for the record, sheriff's report is for the value of $6,974.19, and clerk's report, fee filing is $482.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please. Hugley.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Woller.
Aye.
The next item is receive an order filed, the certification of public tax sale for 2025 as submitted by the county treasurer. Is there anybody that wants to speak to this?
This is just by statute after she has the public tax sale. She just needs to give you guys a recording of what was sold and what was not, for the parcels.
Does any of this need to be read into record?
No.
Just receiving order file.
And the list that we have in front of us is the, are the parcels that were paid correct?
Correct.
Yes. I don't think there were any parcels that were sold or a few.
Be my motion to receive an order filed, the certification of public tax sale 2025, as it was submitted by the county treasurer. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please. Williams.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Hugley.
Aye.
Woller.
Aye.
Nothing for us to sign on that either, is there? Moving on. The next item is authorize the chair to sign an agreement for sale of real estate to Lincoln County from the North Platte Chamber of Commerce and Development Corporation for property located at 18610 Highway 30, Hershey, Nebraska.
It's not every week I get to be wrong, seven days after I said something, but this is the week. There is one more thing apparently we need, was contacted by Title Services. They need an actual purchase agreement for that property. We were so caught up in getting the state to give their blessing that, well, Bill and I were just rolling along on the purchase option, never actually did an agreement. So he did a very basic one, that is the legal equivalent to a nice glass of warm milk. I read it, there's absolutely nothing objectionable, and it's a formality for closing.
Okay. Go ahead.
I would make the motion that we authorize the chair to sign an agreement for sale of real estate to Lincoln County from the North Platte Chamber of Commerce and Development Corporation for property located at 18610 Highway 30, Hershey, Nebraska.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? For the record, Tyler, this is for $1. On item number eight, it said deed, tax, and filing fees. Do we know what those are going to be?
Yes, the clerk's office has the closing statement, about $900, I think.
Yeah. It's $892 or something like that.
Okay.
So that's what we will take a check for to closing. And that's why it's coming through as a claim.
Very good. Roll call, please. Woodruff.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Hugley.
Aye.
Woller.
Aye.
Our next item is authorize the chair to sign the right-of-way application submitted by Consolidated Companies Incorporated.
Morning, Jason Schultz, Lincoln County Highway Superintendent.
Good morning, Jason.
Good morning. So this is a permit for some work out on East Island Road. And it has been reviewed by our department, by the roads department, and no objection.
So, Jason, I have two on behalf, because Commissioner Brunz isn't here. On behalf of Commissioner Brunz and myself, ask our question I ask every time. How are we coming on our recordings? Because on this one, it's going to be probably especially important as to where we have electronically those crossings, et cetera. Do we have anything on that?
Yes, we have been collecting those from permit holders, so we're, we haven't got those incorporated and made that final step of getting them into our system yet, but we are accepting them and holding them from the permits.
So the coordinates, you do have the coordinates or already say that?
Yes.
GPS coordinates?
Yes.
Good. Go ahead.
So it's a matter of getting it, you guys getting it into your system.
Yep.
Okay, we're going to get him a part-time person for those three days then, right? I mean, I'm not pushing. Thank you, Jason.
Yep, yep.
Would be my motion to authorize the chair to sign the right-of-way application that's submitted by Consolidated Companies Incorporated for fiber optic install on East Island Road.
Right.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? There is a check attached for $842.10. Roll call, please. Williams.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Hugley.
Aye.
Woller.
Aye.
Thank you.
Things out of order here. Kim would have changed chairs.
It is 9:15. We will recess as the Lincoln County Board of Commissioners and convene as the Lincoln County Board of Equalization, following the Open Meeting Act, which is posted at the door. We will begin by approving the minutes regarding the Lincoln County Board of Equalization meeting held on March 3rd, 2025.
Chair, I'd make the motion that we approve those minutes regarding the Lincoln County Board of Equalization meeting held on March 3rd, 2025.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please. Woodruff.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Hugley.
Aye.
Woller.
Aye.
Next, certificates of correction and refund as submitted by the county assessor. We have none today, Julie indicates. Good morning.
Do you read?
Thank you. With that, we will adjourn at 9:16 as the Lincoln County Board of Equalization and reconvene as the Lincoln County Board of Commissioners.
This next claim item coming through is a service that claims to Buffalo County in order to serve some paper for us. It might be something we might want to talk to our senator about, because it seems woefully wrong, $6 by the time a person gets it, processes it, takes it through. Gets in a car, goes out, serves it, I mean, obviously, I don't think you can do it for $6.
I mean, not.
We might want to see if we can get that based.
I do know that they have legislation this year to examine fees. I don't know if this fee is part of that.
Well, I'll bet you can make sure that it is.
I will check into it.
Thank you. As efficient as our sheriff is, they can probably do it for three, but not all counties can do that.
Well, maybe so, since they're going to be going to mopeds instead of S.R.V.
That might, that might extend the hourly rate, though.
That beats those 10-year-old sedans we used to put them down in, too, so maybe we can, a good suggestion. Get a little covering for winter. Remember they used to do their tickets that way, didn't they? Remember the, they had readers?
It is 9:20. We will move on to that agenda item, which is a presentation by Jim Griffin, the Lincoln County Historical Museum Director, and one of his board members, Kathy Wenz.
Good morning.
Good morning, how are you?
Good.
Good, good.
If you guys would like to sign in and announce yourselves for the record.
All right. I am Jim Griffin, director and curator of the Lincoln County Historical Museum.
Kathy Wenz, general society member and board member and self-appointed membership chair.
There you go.
Hey, congratulations on that membership chair.
That's probably the most important title that you hold, Kathy. Welcome.
Well, when you ask a question, you got to be prepared to take action.
That's right. What we're, we are working on our corporate membership drive again this year. It was very successful last year, thank you, Kathy. And at the same time, we also have already started our general membership drive that we always do every year. It's a great source of income for us to be able to keep doing the preservation projects, historical projects that we do. And we are actually in the process, hopefully we get approved, to have a Smithsonian exhibit next year. So, yeah, that'd be great. So we're here to see if
But like Joe pointed out, having the Visitors Bureau make sure you guys are a priority.
That is very good to know.
Is, is one way of doing that. So could, could, so you're asking us as individuals to join?
Yeah, yeah.
Very good. What, what else does a person get if they join?
All right, so you get admission to the museum and also admission to the Heritage Festival without any admission fees there. You also get your quarterly newsletter and you get a, invites to events before anybody else does. And those are the primary ones, primary ones that you get with the membership. Kathy has handed out also a corporate membership, so those have different amounts that she can go over.
The reason we started the corporate membership drive is because the buildings are aging, they're getting pricier to maintain, and to develop new exhibits, to encourage, encourage the businesses of North Platte to become involved in the community and involved in the activities that take place out at the museum. Jim didn't mention that, of course, we have school tours, we have that, oh, different schools in the museum come out and we educate them on the history of Lincoln County and what took place there and how to make butter.
Every fourth grader in North Platte.
Yeah, yeah.
Nice.
Yes, so.
And most other, other schools of some grade.
So museums are also an educational resource for the community and for the state, actually, and the nation. With our World War II exhibit, we get, people come in, say, I read Bob Green's book and wanted to make sure I saw this. I, I can't believe all of the stuff you have here and how well it's exhibited, thanks to our curator and our staff of volunteers. Volunteers is the main, what do I want to say? They do the cleaning, they greet the guests, they, we only have Jim and a part-time secretary and a, and a part-time helper who mows and does miscellaneous. Everything else is volunteer.
Kathy, would the volunteers also do the membership by any chance?
Yes, the volunteers, I, I, what happened was, I raised the question as a board member, how come we don't have a list of corporate members? And, well.
Because we need someone to go out and get those corporate members.
Because we need someone out to go out and recruit. So myself and four other board members are going about, we have one board member covering Sutherland and Hershey, we don't have anybody in Wallace yet, but it's, it's a county, it's not just North Platte, it's a county. And that's what we're recruiting. And I made a spreadsheet, I'm a spreadsheet person, I used to work for NPPD and I, I had to monitor the craft labor contract. I had a massive spreadsheet, I do again, and it's North Platte businesses. I got the names from the Chamber of Commerce, I hand typed them in because they don't give you a spreadsheet, and then I took a phone book and typed in all the names, divided them up by addresses, and we're spreading out by address and locations. I have a map of North Platte and we divided it up.
May I ask, add one more thing? I appreciate the letter, I'm a little tied in our business, but the person that really runs our business isn't quite as tied in, you don't need to stop by our office because the check's in the mail.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. I appreciate that, I think, I think that was on my list, I'll cross it off.
One less in you.
Yes, I think I have two hundred and forty-some on just my list.
Is that a failure?
But we appreciate any efforts we, we can to get the public out to the museum to look and see. There's a doctor in our community that goes to my church and he says, gee, I've never been out there. Well, guess who's getting a letter?
I do attend quite a few functions out there. My husband belongs to the Platte Valley Tractor Pullers Association and, and so the Heritage Festival is something that they participate in, and we've had a couple of our tractor banquets out there.
That's right.
Every time I come out there, I see something that I did not notice before. I really enjoyed the new exhibit for the Japanese. So you guys do do a lot in promoting Lincoln County history. I might be able to help hook you up with somebody out of the Wallace community that can help you down there.
Excellent.
I'll email you that information. I will gladly join, and so I will send you, the check is in the mail, right, with Joe's.
And what you will get, like Jim said, when we have some of those events, we open them to membership first, and, and then if we have room, we open it to the public. Well, we had one event last year where Jim had to find an alternate place because it was in such high demand and, and.
Yeah, yeah, to be able to open it up farther.
And, and the event was?
It was Orphan Train Riders.
The Orphan Train Riders.
Oh, yes.
Came and spoke to the membership and then we had to have it out at the State Farm, we weren't big enough.
That was good.
That's a good problem, good problem to have.
Good problem to have, so.
Very good. Jim?
Yes.
Last year, you and I had a conversation, I was late to that conversation and didn't get organized in time, but you do have volunteers that come in, as Kathy mentioned, and clean a building or maybe paint the railing on, on the outside of a building.
Yes.
I, I am interested in putting together a group of Lincoln County employees to volunteer what works best, an evening, a Saturday, Tyler just signed up.
Hey, I'm funny, she's going to volunteer, I love this.
So.
So, so yes, what, basically, in the summertime, whatever works with the county volunteers that you're talking about putting together, we can make work.
Okay, we'll, we'll start off with something small and not a big ask, but.
Sounds good.
I, I did have people here in the courthouse that did say last year that they would be willing to come out and scrub shelves or sweep floors or whatever you guys need.
We can use any of that, we can use any of that.
I will get ahold of you.
Excellent, thank you.
Very good, and that starts just on any good weather day, probably.
Pretty much, yes.
Starting now?
Yep.
My husband's currently helping Jim with the DAR cabin.
If you're familiar with the DAR cabin that was in Memorial Park?
Yes.
Yeah, we're doing a major restoration on it right now. Yeah, and we're, we're finally getting closer.
Yeah.
So, we're getting, it was, it was a big project, he was in bad shape.
I learned to chink.
Yeah, I hope that's not.
It's amazing what you.
Cut into Doug's shooting time.
We'll keep Doug, keep Doug on task.
He, he is, he's meeting Jim later today.
That's right.
When we get through with all.
This is how we keep them out of the gangs, is doing this kind of stuff.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Make sure you put my wife's name on that, too.
Okay. What is your wife's name?
Vicky.
Vicky?
Yeah.
With an I?
Supporting membership.
With I.E.?
Yeah, otherwise she'll say, what?
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
And thank you for listening.
You're welcome.
You're welcome, thanks for coming in.
This, this is a yearly event, so if you need us to come back in yearly, we can do that.
I think it's good for us to get the information out, not just to us around the table, but to the general public, so anything we can do to help.
Well, I've been to the newspaper, the radio, I've been to the Visitors Bureau, I've been to the Chamber of Commerce, trying to let people know we're starting knocking on doors again.
Very good, all right.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jim, thanks, Kathy.
Do you mind if I hand a few out?
No, help yourself. Our next item is discuss and consider acceptance of bid for four SUVs for the Lincoln County Sheriff's Office. Sign up to volunteer.
What's that?
Just write your name on there if you want to volunteer.
Oh.
To help us on a weekend or a weeknight.
You can put us all on the same line here.
That would be my sign up sheet.
Are you going to shame me into this?
Yes.
That sounds like it.
You know how to work a broom, Joe, I've seen it.
Oh, what?
She was throwing softballs at.
Whose, whose name did you put on there?
Joe.
Chris Brun.
Chris Brun.
I put my head, put it so you could read it, I have a big signature.
Very good, good morning, gentlemen.
Good morning, Jerome Kramer, Sheriff.
Dan Newton, Captain.
Lieutenant Connell.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Last week, we opened the bids and you guys requested that we table it until today. I will assume that you had time to review everything and are coming back with a recommendation.
Yeah, Captain Newton typed up a little review for you here, it goes back to in December when we got bids on pickups. We only had one bid, and that bid didn't fit in the budget for this year. We have a hundred thousand dollar line item for vehicles, so we couldn't purchase at that time. So based on that, we knew we were going to have to change from pickups to SUVs, or at least try to. So six, five weeks ago, we went out to bid for SUVs and we got those bids back last In a nutshell, the four Fords came in at one twenty-nine, four ninety-seven sixty from Bill Summers. Janson came in with two different bids, with a V-six and a V-eight. The V-sixes were ninety thousand, three hundred and sixty, and the V-eights were a hundred and three, four, or three twenty. So using the six cylinders that put Janson at thirty-nine thousand, one hundred and thirty-seven under Bill Summers for the four vehicles. So we had some discussion, because obviously there's enough spread there, we would be getting the Durangos to stay in our budget. We had a discussion with the three of us and I kind of have a mindset of a little old-fashioned and still believe in the V-eights, but the V-sixes are getting to be pretty impressive. So what Lieutenant Connell suggested was that if we go with two of each, maybe get acquainted with the V-sixes, we might see some tremendous savings, maybe up to five miles to the gallon in, in fuel savings, which is substantial, the number of miles we drive. So I guess what we're asking today is to do two V-six Durangos and two V-eight Durangos with a total cost of ninety-six thousand, eight hundred and forty dollars, which is roughly three thousand dollars under budget.
So is that what would be known as the canal option?
That's what I would be.
Conal option.
Conal option. He thought I was joking this morning, I was just going to blame it on him.
You really did.
He did.
And we wanted, in the case they explode, we wanted him to be the one to fix the line. But both of those are, are performance vehicles, they, they have a top end of like one thirty-five, so.
I see how they threw you under the bus, they were going to tell the guys that we'd do V-hs. Connell said, you know, maybe, I, I see how it goes downhill, I understand, it's okay.
We didn't need him to come over this morning, we just wanted him to see it happen.
I actually like the suggestion of doing two of each and, and having a comparison. I mean, you don't know unless you try, right?
I think, I think the, didn't the information show about five miles to the gallon difference over what we're getting? We're doing like thirteen with the pickups.
Thirteen and fourteen between Ram and Ford pickups and the, even the Ford interceptors, eighteen to twenty miles per gallon, so that's a huge jump. Hemi is eighteen, the V-six is twenty-one. We understand we're not going to get that because we're driving them a little harder than that, but even three, four miles per gallon over the span of a year is, is big money.
Well, I, for one, appreciate the work that you guys did to get this to work in our budget.
It's Monday.
Are there any trade-ins?
Yeah, they're figured in here.
There's four Ram pickups being traded.
The trades are sixty-seven thousand.
Aggregate, sixty-seven aggregate.
Right.
Was that a little, a little lower than what we had been getting on trade-ins?
It is, I think trade is something we need to discuss next year. We may take a different run at this at budget time. And I think there's value in disposing of those vehicles ourselves. I think they'll sell for mid, mid twenties.
At least low twenties, I would, I would hope. Good condition, you've taken care of them.
Yeah, it's hard to find a vehicle that has every, every trip to the shop recorded.
Every light bulb changed out, recorded.
And they are well taken care of, they get regular service, but we can, we can take a look at that then.
We're still able to put it out for local bid and sell the vehi, the pickups ourself, or that would be the state net bid?
That's, that's a discussion we would have to have with the board.
Okay.
Yeah. When it comes to that budget line.
Okay.
And I can tell you, we used to, you know, run our vehicles to nothing and then sell them and we, ourself, and we got nothing, so we have to remember that we have a better vehicle, and that probably will take some, you know, roll of the dice, and so I'm glad that guys with all the stripes on their sleeves can make that decision.
There's a lot of things have changed, we used to put clipboards on the windshields, run them to a hundred and thirty, and people stand there and bid, but now with the online auctions and stuff like that, there's people. In the case they explode, we wanted him to be the one to make the point. But both of those are, are performance vehicles. They, they have a top end of like one thirty-five. So.
I see how they threw you under the bus. They were going to tell the guys that we'd do V-h. Connell said, you know, maybe, I, I see how it goes downhill. I understand. It's okay.
We didn't need him to come over this morning. We just wanted him to see it happen.
I actually like the suggestion of doing two of each and, and having a comparison. I mean, you don't know unless you try, right?
I think, I think the, um, didn't the information show about five miles a gallon difference over what we're getting? We're doing like thirteen with the pickups.
Thirteen and fourteen between Ram and Ford pickups and the, uh, even the Ford interceptors, eighteen to twenty miles per gallon. So that's a huge jump. Hemi is eighteen, the V-six is twenty-one. We understand we're not going to get that because we're driving them a little harder than that, but even three, four miles per gallon over the span of a year is, is big money.
Well, I for one appreciate the work that you guys did to get this to work in our budget.
Are there any trade-ins?
Yeah, they're figured in here.
There's four Ram pickups being traded.
The trades are sixty-seven thousand.
Aggregate, sixty-seven aggregate.
Was that a little, a little lower than what we had been getting on trade-ins?
It is. Um, I think trade is something we need to discuss next year. Um, we may take a different run at this at budget time. And, uh, I think there's value in disposing of those vehicles ourselves. I think they'll sell for mid, mid twenties.
At least low twenties, I would, I would hope. Good condition. You've taken care of them.
Yeah, it's hard to find a vehicle that has every, every trip to the shop recorded.
Every light bulb changed out, recorded.
And they are well taken care of. They get regular service and, but, um, we can, we can take a look at that then.
We're still able to put it out for local bid and sell the vehi, the pickups ourself, or that would be the state net bid?
That's, that's a discussion we would have to have with the board.
Okay.
Yeah.
When it comes to that budget line.
And I can tell you, we used to, uh, you know, run our vehicles to nothing and then sell them and we, ourself, and we got nothing. So we have to remember that we have a better vehicle and that probably will take some, you know, roll of the dice and so. I'm glad that guys with all the stripes on their sleeves can make that decision.
There's a lot of things have changed. We used to put clipboards on the windshields, run them to a hundred and thirty and people stand there and bid, but now with the online auctions and stuff like that, there's people from other states that can bid on, and we're not running them to a hundred and thirty either. And we, I think Marshall and I have talked that we'd get more selling outright than him having to strip the stripes off and, and sell it.
Very good. Um, I do appreciate the, the form that you put together. It's nice to have it all spelled out in front of us. So thank you for that.
And I, I did fail just to, uh, thank the, the Bill Summers and, uh, and, uh, Jansons for bidding. It's certainly saves the county a lot of money when we can compare prices and, uh, it's, it's a joint effort to save the taxpayers some money. So, um, I'm glad that, uh, we all worked together on that and the work these guys did.
Well, it's just trying to keep the money in the county.
Local.
That's.
Yeah.
Spend a little bit more, but it stays here.
All right.
Ready for a motion?
I am ready for a motion.
I'm sure I make a motion that we, uh, accept a bid from Janson for four vehicles, two V-eights and two V-sixes, including trade. That net cost is ninety-six thousand, eight hundred and forty dollars, and that would include the Lieutenant Connell option.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Is there any other discussion? Roll call please. Hugh Lee.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes.
Williams.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Uller.
Aye.
I was thinking how that's going to come out in the paper with the Connell.
Joe will be available for an interview.
No kickback.
Talk to the lieutenant or fuck it, not me.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Marshall. Our next item is discuss and consider proposal from Shellco Asphalt and Paving for the crack joint seal for Lincoln County Department of Roads.
Morning again. Jason Charles, Lincoln County Highway Superintendent.
Good morning, Jason.
Uh, so this is a proposal that we requested, uh, for, I guess, supplementing our crack sealing program that we're going with right now. So this is for the, the labor and all the equipment associated with crack sealing. So we can try to, um, just get a little more pavement maintenance in this year before the season closes out for us to do the seal work. Um, we did have this in our budget and had this figured in already. So we do have a line item, um, for this as well as all the material we need to supply to them.
By looking at the bid here, Jason, um, we, we will provide the traffic control that gets the discount?
Um, no, actually we wouldn't because we're, all our forces are busy right now with traffic control and our own joint sealing operations. So we wouldn't be able to provide the traffic control. So I'd like to have them do the, the full amount of the fourteen thousand, four hundred and ninety dollars that includes the traffic control.
That was going to be my question. I thought we were doing crack sealing. So this is going to be an addition.
Yep.
So to.
Yep. Yeah, because we're i- in our maintenance, we, we just, we have a lot of crack sealing we need to do. So we're trying to get as much done as we can every year. And like I said, we did anticipate this and, um, with the way our progress is going with our crew this year, we wanted to go ahead and get them in to help us out with, uh, getting some more miles done.
So when would this work be done?
Um, they are available to probably start here in about two weeks.
Okay. I was going to say, don't we do a lot of crack sealing in the winter when they're open and we're slow on time? I mean.
Yeah, they're, they're still open. We've been crack sealing actually.
That's my, that was going to be.
Quite a while.
I was going to say, we should be about the end of crack season.
Yeah.
Because otherwise they're going to start sealing up as the weather warms up.
Yep. That's why we're wanting to do this, uh, now and just try to get some more miles in before we do lose our.
On the same page. Thank you.
And Jason, you have, um, explained to us in the past, all the benefits of being, um, preventative and sealing the cracks before they turn into major problems.
Yes, very much so.
This is, in my understanding, a good spend of county road money is to get this work done before it manifests into a bigger problem.
And I guess for the, the location of this work too, right now, we have this, our next area we were going to move to that we'll probably, uh, utilize Shellco if this is approved, would be, um, out around the lake for the most part, um, all the, from eighty-three all the way in around the dam, around the south side, um, as well as, um, the subdivision over by the inlet, um, all those roads, because those are all in need.
Chair, I would, uh, make the motion that we approve the proposal from Shellco Asphalt and Paving for a crack joint seal for Lincoln County Department of Roads in the amount of fourteen thousand, four hundred and ninety dollars.
We have a motion in a second. Is there any other questions or discussion?
Uh, Jason, one question. Is this based on the number of miles or the number of hours that they put in?
Um, it's actually based on the material that they use. Um, so they do a per pallet price just because it, it can vary so much from road to road. So they just price this per pallet of material, run through their machine.
I'm scared. Thank you.
Get some of those things that really open up with a big hole in there. Maybe you drain a pallet and win more.
Roll call please. Woodruff.
Aye.
Hugh Lee.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Uller.
Aye.
It is nine fifty. This agenda item is discuss and consider special designated liquor permit submitted by La Casa Del Rios for an event on April eleventh, twenty twenty-five at the Lincoln County Historical Museum. Good morning. If you would like to sign in and announce yourself.
I am Kim Delly. I own La Casa Del Rios.
They do have a catering permit, but where they had not, to my knowledge, done anything for a special designated permit, or it's been a long time. I asked.
I was like, it's been a while.
It's been a long time.
I have a couple. Mostly it's been city anything lately.
Yeah.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Would you like to just review what the event is?
Um, I was asked to do foods and liquor for an adult Easter egg hunt at the Historical Museum. They plan on having like fifty people, they said is all. Um, it's in an area that's pretty much fenced already. Um, there is one open side which will put the food truck, which will cover most of it, and then we'll fence anything that isn't enclosed, which is just kind of a piece going up the sidewalk, I think, uh, to the building. Um, from my understanding, there won't be any minors anyway, but we'll also have probably people monitoring, like each side, kind of make sure nothing. Um, the alcohol will only be allowed in that area, um, because my understanding, the hunt is actually out in the buildings and stuff, and we won't allow alcohol to go out of the area. We also will have food there, so. Not that that matters too much with the alcohol, but it's kind of, and we're only doing, um, beer and maybe some wine coolers or something, nothing like hard alcohol or anything like that.
Kim, do you usually do like arm, or wristband?
Oh, and wrist, yeah, I forgot about that. Yeah. And I, we would do wristbands.
You'd, you'd, you'd check IDs and wristband them?
Yes. I, I always say I'm the ID queen even at work. I'm like, I ask people that look plenty old enough, but.
Well, we have the sheriff in the room. I don't know if you have any questions.
If he was having a drink, I would.
Really?
Yeah. I would, no, I would probably ask him just because I know he's old enough, but.
Maybe.
Maybe, but, but yeah. I always like to card just to make sure.
Very good.
And you, you obviously don't have any concerns with this, Sheriff?
No, I don't have a few concerns.
Would be my note, my motion to approve the special designated liquor permit submitted by La Casa Del Rios for an event that's going to be held April eleventh, twenty twenty-five at the Lincoln County Historical Museum.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Are there any other questions or concerns? With that, roll call please. Williams.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Hugh Lee.
Aye.
Uller. Aye.
Thank you.
And we have a check here for forty dollars.
Yeah, it's all weird. So we will email you a copy of that so you can come up to the state and we still have to pay the fees local. All like, it's crazy. They can pay some online.
I know. I said, it's been a while since I did a county.
So we will email it to you.
Hey.
Thank you.
Thank you, Becky.
Yeah. Been doing it about a year and now they're going to do a, a training on it. Yeah, yeah, actually.
Now that, now that you've compiled your list of questions.
Call, call with some questions. Well, I'm doing a presentation. Would you look through this and see if this is you or who, if this looks okay? Do you understand it? I'm like, well, great. That's fine. Started last May.
It is ten o'clock. Our next agenda item is our public hearing on amendments to the Lincoln County General Assistance and Medical Assistance Guidelines. Uh, I will officially open the hearing at ten AM. We did have a committee that was working on, uh, the public assistance guidelines. Um, or maybe Tyler and Becky would like to speak to, um, the program and what was on. So Kent, Jerry?
Well, we, uh, Jerry and I pretty much, uh, passed a buck on this one after we kicked it around for months. And, uh, when we got into heavy lifting, uh, we relied heavily on Tyler and Jada and Becky to, uh, pair notes and, and crunch numbers and review the entire body of the document. Uh, and admittedly, probably Jerry and I's emphasis was more on the, uh, indigent, uh, process for burials and cremation and, and, uh, honestly, we didn't spend a lot of time on the rest of it, but these other capable folks did so and saved us once again. So thank you. So thank you for doing so. I don't know, do you want to lead off, Tyler?
I was just going to suggest that Madam Chair, you simply allow the, uh, HHS representatives to explain what the program is and what they do for us and what we looked at.
Thank you.
Since they are the experts in the room. So, Becky.
I think that's, that's a great way to open this hearing is by having the people that work with the program the most. If you guys, have you signed in?
Yep.
Would, if you would announce yourselves so everybody knows who you are, and then you can brief us on the program.
Okay. My name's Jada Van Easy. I am the unit manager for, um, the Department of Health and Human Services. We are contracted with the county, um, to administer your general assistance program. So it's really your program and we just follow your guidelines and then determine eligibility for that program. So we were talking, Tyler and Becky and I were talking about how the amount that we have been able to approve has drastically decreased in the last decade. And so we were talking, we focused primarily on the burials or the cremations and then the rent assistance and the income guidelines because the cost of living has not been compensated in the guidelines lately. So that's really what we were looking at, rent, um, how much for cremation services and income.
Very good.
You know, for a clarification, thank you, Jane. Um, if you look at a piece of paper, which I'm terrible at, but, um, last year or so, I looked in Becky's office, you see this paper, and we used to do all of this great amount of work that just kind of went like this. And so, uh, being an uneducated person, I made the wrong assumption that, well, maybe those people over there just aren't doing their job. So thank you for educating me on you couldn't do your job. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Very good. Um, are there any materials that we need to receive in for the record other than?
No, not today.
Nothing today?
Anything else you want to add?
No.
That's it?
That's it.
That's it.
Okay, um, I'll throw a little bit out since, uh, back to the, uh, cremation, uh, topic. I did speak with one of the local funeral directors here in town, and he regrets, uh, that he couldn't attend. He, he had two services to oversee today, so he couldn't make it. But Mike Montgomery, as you all know, has been, uh, front and center in providing service to the county and very, uh, very willing to do so, uh, very community minded. And so that everybody knows he owns, uh, not only Adams and Swanson funeral, but Carpenter Memorial Chapel. Um, kind of revisiting some of this with Mike on Friday. Um, and I told him, this is why I can't quote you chapter and verse on what we've changed on the proposals, but, uh, Mike's comment basically was any and all help with that fee structure was appreciated. And he, he reassured me that they would continue to provide service to the, the needs of, uh, the indigent through the county system and, and so in the HHS guidelines. So I appreciate that and publicly want to acknowledge and thank him for, for doing so. Very community minded, uh, organization there to help us.
I think it's important to note that when we went through this, um, Jada and Becky and I sat in here and we went through every amount, every dollar amount that is in those guidelines, and I believe all of them were updated to some extent. Um, so what we're looking at is not just a review, but a s- pretty significant revision, um, to bring the numbers in line with 2025, or at least 2020. We'll look at it again in a couple more years. Hopefully, the cost of living has gone down. I doubt that. Um, but we can also revisit those numbers at that time.
Appreciate it. And I also noticed, um, I put it in, a little supplement in there, put it all together with the rest of my, um, general medical assistance stuff, uh, so that the public knows those guidelines are really at a, at a very, very bare base minimum amount. So, um, it, it still isn't necessarily easy sometimes to find services at those amounts, but at least it's a little bit more realistic to be able to open a conversation. So, thank you.
I will say that, um, leading up to today, I had had, um, people contact me in the community, um, expressing, you know, some concerns with the, the amounts and how long those amounts had been the same. And while they were as committed to providing the service as, as we are, um, you know, it had become burdensome on our local businesses. So thank everybody, you guys and Tyler, Becky, Kent, Jerry, um, for doing this work. Cause I, I, I know it's, um, took a lot of time to gather the data, review the information, put this together. And I will say that the people that had communicated with me after our last review communicated again and were very pleased with the recommendation that you guys had come up with. So thank you for the work.
And when we do this again in another two years, it should be a little easier.
I agree. I agree. Um, is there anybody, uh, in the audience that would like to add comments or speak to the update to the program?
Well, I, I want to thank Jada. She's been very good to work with over the years, but their hands were, were tied.
Yes.
And, um, the sundry program for basic necessities for deodorant, shampoo, baths, so things like that, burden of, there was no place for people to even get them. So she actually did the legwork to get a new, uh, vendor for those because we haven't had anything since Alco closed and we know how long that has been. So I want to thank them for their work. She, she's the one that did the hard, heavy lifting.
Thank you. I don't know if we can thank you guys enough for this work. So it's real, it's very important for our, um, people in the community that need this service to, to have it available to them. So, um, if there's nothing else, um, I will officially close the public hearing and will seek a motion to close the hearing.
And Chair, I would make a motion that it, uh, Colonel Ryan, we close the public hearing in regards to Lincoln County General Assistance and Medical Assistance Guidelines.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to close the public hearing. Roll call, please.
Aye. Aye.
Hughley.
Aye.
Luler. Aye. And finally, uh, I will seek a motion on what action for us to take today. No?
No.
You have, by statute, we have to wait. You can't do it today.
Next week.
Oh, next week. Okay, did not know that. We will address this again next week.
Yes.
Thank you.
I, I'm not sure.
Okay, there's a lot of things we do that we're not sure why.
She's ready to go. Here you go.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, ladies.
Thank you. Okay, um, I'm going to skip closed session and move on to hear concerns from elected officials, department heads or their representatives. Does anybody have anything? Sheriff Kramer?
Oh, man.
Jason?
I do have.
Okay, Joe?
Uh, let's see. Trying not to be done out, done by my old Christian Williams. Last week, I went back and asked that, um, Region Two Human Services put together a little chart to kind of give us some information. There's two of these that. And might just, um, I, I guess the, the main thing I wanted to show was how much our money is actually leveraged. Um, and when we look at the different programs, uh, and the one we wanted to see isn't even on there, but, uh, we could, uh, um. I, I get it on a monthly sheet, this doesn't necessarily show it, but of the, of the services rendered to the nineteen counties, probably in some of the programs, ninety percent and others maybe down to sixty-five or seventy percent of all those counties go to Lincoln County. I'm thinking of EPCs, uh, you know, emergency protective services most of all. They have a crisis team there at Region Two that if we put every EPC in that was called either by law enforcement or someone, we would be, it would be a highway through heck between here and Lincoln trying to get people in because obviously we don't have the bed space up here. So they have a crisis team, they have people that meet, uh, a counselor twenty-four hours a day with people to try to figure out when there is a, an emergency, what, how else can we handle that? That doesn't reflect here, but it does show some of the programs and sort of how some of these dollars are leveraged. Um, I'll try to, I, I have it, I just don't have it in this program, but just want you to know that, uh, I think that the Region Two does probably the best job. There's five regions in the state of any of those regions. And if you look at the cost, uh, per client, uh, we're, we're far less when actually we should be way, way more. And the reason I say that is the region itself actually performs a lot of these services for us. You go into the Region One or Two, Lincoln Omaha area, they have, um, probably ten contractors or twelve contractors. There's a lot of available clinicians, uh, mental health professionals down there that we don't necessarily have. So when we don't have those services, we provide a lot of those services in-house. And so they, they do a tremendous job. Um, I feel really blessed to have them as part of it. And, you know, one of these things, uh, there's, it's actually two different groups. Region Two has, uh, a, many mental and physical disability end of, of business, and that is, uh, involves like the Opportunity Center and all of those. They have another wing that's, one's called Human Services, the other one's called Health, I, I don't know, there's another name with it that has to do mostly with mental health and alcohol. This one that I got to report from today is Mental Health and Alcohol are, are the biggest things that they work on. And, um, the, uh, other one, the, uh, that works with the disabled is a, is a different division, which I can bring also, but I think most of us are familiar with having, uh, the, the Opportunity Center here and the tremendous job that they do with, working with youth through it. And I think it goes all the way up through the adult years, if you recall. So I just wanted to bring that and just make that as a point of reference for you.
So is that, is that, am I reading the ratios? This is like a twelve to one, uh, this is like a twelve, eleven or twelve to one match, uh, value back to the.
It, it is.
Community on the aggregate budget?
It, it, it is, but you know what? That's, that doesn't really say what I wanted to say because it's really hundreds of one to one because of the, if you look at that four hundred and twenty-two thousand down there, um.
It's about, it's about ten to one you're getting.
But the thing is, our budget's like a ten million dollar.
Oh, ten million.
Yeah. So rather than the four twenty-two, we really have ten million. So I, I need to bring a different sheet that I asked her to do this in short order that's going to even show that impact more when we start looking at some federal funds and stuff like that. Because, you know, I think that budget is nine point eight million or something annually. And so you can see is, uh, just, uh, it's a great program. And I'll, I'll have some more information.
What's eye opening for me, Commissioner Hughley is, um, they kind of operate quietly in our community. Uh, but look at the number of encounters that they've had just in Lincoln County. They're really touching a lot of people.
That, that number is impressive. Well, it's not impressive, it's sad.
It is sad.
But it's, it's eye opening, I guess.
It's nice to see that they, they are here and available. I do have a question. Um, a couple years ago, we, uh, committed our opioid settlement funds to go to Region Two. Am I remembering that correctly? Have they communicated the benefit? How are they receiving those dollars?
They, they are. Uh, I need to tell you that there's two sets of opioid dollars that go to Region, the regions. One from the state, which is probably eight or ten times of what ours as counties are. And we have our money go directly to them. Other counties, you know, McPherson County, they might have two thousand or fifteen hundred dollars worth of opioid settlement, write a check. And, uh, but yes, they, they make a tremendous amount of difference in, in what, I guess what, um, the opioid dollars are pretty specific on how they can be funded. County dollars are not. So whenever there's a gap in a program, that's sort of where they try to use the county dollars.
Good to know.
Opioid dollars, I think, could, one of the things they could go on, if I'm not mistaken, was, um, retention. Uh, just like we were talking earlier here with our, uh, general medical assistance being right on the baseline, we are having a very, very, very difficult time keeping employees because we are right at that baseline. So part of that went to retention on a bonus thing, but, um, it's getting harder and harder to keep those programs. I know that the program, for example, with, uh, with the disabled in Ogallala was, uh, it's just sort of dissolved. They just couldn't make it work. So in the last two or three months, the Northland Opportunity Centers group took that program over. They're seeing clients again up in Ogallala and it's, it's starting to work, but we, uh, have some really devoted individuals out there that, that give a lot of their life doing that.
Thanks for sharing this information. I appreciate it. Um, I did have one thing that I would like to bring into the, back to the conversation. A week or two ago, we had the Siren, um, invoice come across our desks and we had tabled it. I reached out to the city administrator, Lane Gross of, to see if, um, if there was an MOU in place. Tyler and Becky searched our records. I believe somebody around this table asked what the agreement was and what the formal split was. We could not come up with anything other than, um, it had been done like this since certain people had been at their jobs. So, uh, Brandon Meyer, our emergency manager director, who is off on medical leave right now, did reach out to me over the weekend and want to know where we were at with that. I feel like, um, we need a committee to get with the city and come back to us with a recommendation on what the split should be.
But, you know, could I, just for right now, so that we, shouldn't we just pay this bill?
I think so.
Just let's just pay the cotton picking bill and then get our agreement and go forward. I mean, it's out there, the service has been provided, they've been doing it the way they have forever. Please, Tyler, do you have a question? Come in. I mean, seriously.
We don't have a legal obligation to pay that.
Oh, okay.
I, I'm not saying don't.
Okay.
But there's no underlying agreement requiring the candidate to pay that, so that could be viewed as something of a donation to the city.
So what have we been doing in the past? What kind of a split?
This is what I learned in my conversations. Um, the city had an employee who, uh, saved both the city and the county a lot of money by doing most of the work himself. Uh, and so the, uh, Lane Gross have said, ever since he's been with the city, which is six years, the county has always paid fifty percent of the parts and fifty percent of, uh, years, the county has always paid fifty percent of the parts and fifty percent of, uh, any invoices associated with the siren repairs and maintenance. That employee, I think, retired several years ago, and it was just one of those things that fell through the gaps. And so, because there hadn't been a lot done, um, they hired a certified company to do it, and because it hadn't been maintained or replay, repaired in a while, that's why this bill is fairly substantial. So, that's kind of where we're at with, with the history of how this has been taken care of in the past. They said, you know, this, this was a big bill, a lot of the batteries were weak or not working at all, um, lots of things needed repaired and replaced. So, moving forward, they don't expect the repairs or the maintenance to be that big of a request, and it'll be done, I can't remember if he said once or twice annually, so it'll be smaller increments.
What was our fifty percent? Do you remember what that amount was?
I think the total bill was...
Between twelve thousand and thirteen, between twelve, thirteen thousand.
For the total bill, right? And so, half of that.
No, that, it was...
Oh, that was our half?
Yeah, it was twenty, like twenty-four thousand, twenty-five thousand, I don't know.
I just glanced at the bill, so...
Fifty percent.
Would be the twelve thousand and change. Okay.
Does that put us in, if we deny paying that, does that kind of puts extra burden on the city? I'd hate to see the citizens not be served with emergency notifications, that there's a lot of ramifications for that that go beyond twelve thousand dollars probably in my process.
And we've, we've always had a good working relationship with the city, as we should. We should be a city county partnership, so, you know, we can write a letter with this and say, we understand that that's how this one worked, and we're paying it because that's the way it's been done, and we'll sit down and see if we can't get some city people and county people together and iron out maybe a number of sirens or whatever, and come up with a nice agreement for the future.
Do you think this falls kind of in the same area as the nine-one-one center? Do we have a committee that addresses that? Would this be something that we could add to that committee?
I don't think we do have a nine-one-one center, and that was different because that had a lot of, when nine-one-one first came out, there was all kind of funding that went to different people, and city and county got together, and, you know, they're going to collect this, and because of that, and so, that's really, I, there's not a nine-one-one committee as far as I know. Okay, and maybe there should be, maybe, maybe it's something, I think, I think that whomever's the chair probably should really study this issue, and, and I think there's probably, on the west end of the table, some good committee members there that would probably want to be involved with that.
That's west, right? Yeah, I like that.
I mean, that's just my, I'm not the chair, so I can't...
So, Tyler, make a recommendation to us. Is this something that we need to put back on the agenda for a formal action with, with that invoice for next week?
No.
Okay.
If, if the chair is simply going to appoint an ad hoc committee based on Commissioner Hughley with his robust experience, um, no. I advise the board on what I thought, that's good enough for me, so...
I, I like, I like the concept of Joe's suggestion that we, in good faith, we make sure we serve the public safety interest, and simultaneously identify that we need to further clarify this MOU with the city for next year and beyond. And at that point, I, I think the, maybe the caveat would be, uh, since we are working with a handwritten agreement per se, that we are not applying, that we are going to assume a dedicated percentage moving forward, but recognizing the need and wanting to serve the public safety interest, we will, as a one-time effort, make this payment, um, stand by for, need your agreement to be hammered out. Does that make sense?
That was emotional. Would you read that back, please?
It's not, it's not an agenda item, so we can't, we can't do, we can't do a motion today since it's not on the agenda, but...
No, I, I, the, the question was about paying the bill. We got a bill in front of us right now, so you handle it. If you want to come back and take care of it, that's your call. We got a bill in front of us.
What had we been paying in the past? Probably not anywhere in this vicinity of dollars, right?
Apparently, it was small enough that nobody noticed it enough to question it around this table.
There was, there was nothing that...
Yeah, it was small amounts here and there.
Yeah, it'd been nice to maybe had some communication prior to this to maybe have some input into what was done, but, uh, yeah, we've incurred the bill, we're probably out there.
I agree. So, let's have the bill come back around the table for processing.
I don't, I don't know that they've actually got a bill yet. I think that was a proposal. I think they're, Brandon told me they're actually going to start work this week, so I don't know if we've actually got a bill yet.
All right. So, maybe we...
So, that was not an invoice that was circulated, it was just our heads up?
I, I believe so. They're going to do the work this week unless they're paying us out ahead. I don't know.
Well, that's, that, to me, adds a different light on it, so, I don't know.
You probably need to clarify that with Brandon, I might know it to be dangerous.
Yeah, I was, I was thinking we had a bill.
I thought, I thought it was an invoice.
But if we didn't, I feel a little bit differently. If it was a bill, I'd say, let's get it paid and then go on.
If, if the work hasn't been done, probably posthaste to sit down with them and delineate what is county's responsibility and what isn't.
I think he told me they're starting this week.
Okay, I will communicate with Brandon and Lane over at the city office and have some clarification on that for next Monday's meeting. In the meantime, I would like two volunteers today for being on that committee.
Chris would be one because he's not here.
And he would probably gladly do that.
I will volunteer.
Okay, one from each direction around the table. That is fair. Thank you, gentlemen. You forgot that you mentioned that, didn't you?
No, I mean, I, are you, are you really going to put Chris on it?
Yes.
Oh, okay. That was a joke.
Let's see if he's listening. He might be texting me right now as we speak.
Remember, I didn't do that. She is the chair, she did it.
We can have more discussion about this next week. Uh, all right. With that said, uh... Tyler, do we have a need for a closed session today?
Well, I don't need one, but somebody told me we do need one.
Was it someone that you asked her to?
Oh, no.
No.
Oh.
All right, we, we do have a need for a closed session today. Going into the closed session will be the four commissioners, Tyler Volkmer, Rebecca Harling, and it is for discussion with respect to pending or imminent litigation and the avoidance thereof. If I can get a motion, please.
Chair, I would make the motion that at ten-thirty, we go into closed session to discuss strategy with respect to pending or imminent litigation. Second.
Roll call, please.
Order.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Hughley.
Aye.
We will now enter closed session at ten-thirty to discuss strategy with respect to pending or imminent litigation.
Okay, I will seek a motion to come out of closed session.
So I make the motion at 11:26 or you come out of closed session?
Second.
We have a motion in a second to come out of closed session at 11:26. Roll call please.
Aye.
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 Yes. Sure. Oh, you go to the principal's office.
Okay. With that, does anybody have anything else for the good of the county? We will adjourn at 11:27. Was that for me or Joe?